Okay. Good evening. The special meeting of the planning board, scheduled for April 25th at 6:30, is commencing. We are going to focus on two items only. Continued public hearings on two town meeting articles, Article 9 and Article 11. So, Jean, can you give us an update on where we are?
So, as you know, tonight's meeting was added to our planning board schedule. It is a continued public hearing to further discuss the citizen petition warrant articles number 9 and 11. These articles propose to extend the medical marijuana overlay district to a certain portion of land located at 1600 Oscar Street, and to amend certain language in bylaw section 8.11, 8.12, which is the medical marijuana overlay district bylaw. In the board packet, you have received two documents submitted by Michael Rosen. The first of which you do not have in hard copy. It was edit history to date, so it was a color-coded document sent in the electronic packet. And the second document identifies both the edit history to date, as well as proposed additional edits. You do have that in hard copy, and that is here for discussion tonight. You may want --
I have them if you want them.
That's okay. They have them in hard copy. So you may want to follow maybe a similar track as last meeting, where Mr. Rosen can explain those edits and put context to them. And then I think there's really two levels for discussion tonight. The first level I'd describe as kind of the big picture, and that level I'd include extending the MMOD to this parcel of land, and what impact that may or may not have on the community. The second is the effect of the proposed moratorium for recreational marijuana establishments and retailers. So at the last meeting, you voted favorable recommendation, and if that was to be put in place, really, what does that mean for this parcel of land, and to fully understand the impact of that. And then the sequencing and timing of these warrant articles and the proposals versus the anticipated timing for the promulgation of state regulations. And Suzanne Egan is here again tonight, and she can help flush that out and answer any questions you may have regarding the sequencing and timing of that. And then the second level I would consider as discussion item is just the substantive changes that are being proposed in the language itself, and, again, go through that maybe in detail if you choose.
Okay. Great. Okay. So we will first let, give the applicant an opportunity to explain the current version of what we have.
So that is a color-coded version. It should look like this in your packet. And the key to this version is at the very top. So the green describes original additions and deletions. The yellow is what we called, I'm sorry, the subsequent additions and deletions. The orange is what we call kind of technical errors in the original submission. And the blue is since this past meeting, proposed edits. Is that any change to what you submitted, or no? That's the same? There is? Okay.
So just let the record show, we're getting additional new language.
Okay.
Now.
First and foremost, I want to thank you for scheduling this additional session. I appreciate the opportunity to come back and try and answer some of the questions that you raised at the last planning board meeting, and try and propose some additional language that we hope will further answer some of the questions you had, and make the warrant articles that we had previously presented more understandable to you, and more in a format that we hope that you would find acceptable. So what I just handed out to you is two documents. The first with the orange is what Jean described as kind of the technical edits, the original edits. And what I wanted to do is just lay them out on separate pieces of paper. And then the blue are additional edits since our last meeting, and they did include a couple of minor tweaks to the language that we made in the last couple of days. We knew there was a deadline to get something to Jean at the end of the week last week, so we got Jean materials in advance of the deadline, so that she could distribute them to the board. But we did still make a few minor, like a word here or a word there, change, and I can walk you through them, and I can explain them to you. I would start with the orange document, and if you want, I can go through that. That is the document that we went through at the last meeting, where we explained some of the technical changes that we had made after meeting with Town Council Suzanne Egan, Erica Flori, and Jean Anright. And those changes are on the single orange sheet of paper. I'm happy to go through them again with you if you'd like. And if not, I can focus on the blue changes and talk to you about what the blue changes are, and why we made those changes.
So version 2 is the same markup as this. There's no differences on version 2. Is that correct or not?
The orange is still the orange.
This one's yellow. This one's orange.
Yeah. It's the, yes.
Yeah.
Probably a different printer, but yes.
Okay. So there's no, so that's the same.
Correct.
Okay.
And those were the matters that we talked about at the last meeting. So the first change at the heading of Article 9 was just the heading of the section that Jean wanted us to correct. The second orange change in 8.12.3 was the draft release of the map, because we updated the map, which is also, this evening, you're looking at warrant articles 9 and 11. The map is Article 11. So this change in the orange that says draft release 33117 ties to the revised map that you're going to see when you talk about Article 11. The next was a definitional section that we had added in at Jean's recommendation to better define. Then in 8.12.6B was the revised language to clarify that we would not sell or dispense, and we better define the definition of a facility on the property. So these are all the prior changes that we had shown you at the last meeting. The blue are the new changes. The first change in 8.12.1, when Attorney Egan discussed this section at the last hearing, she mentioned that she felt that the word "underlying" was not the right word in that location. She felt as though the word "applicable" was the appropriate word. So based on the comment that she made at the hearing, we made that change from "underlying" The second change in 8.12.63C related to, your bylaw had said that in order to apply for a special permit, we needed to submit a copy of our registration. We explained at the last hearing that we couldn't get the registration before applying for the special permit, because it was kind of a chicken and an egg. You had to have your facility built, and we couldn't build the facility without the special permit, and therefore, we could never get a registration until we had the special permit in hand. If you look in the materials that you actually have submitted in the package for this evening, there is a chart. Do you want to throw that one up on the screen? This shows the actual process that you have to go through with the state, and essentially, the, it's really four steps. The last two are provisional registration and final registration. But the steps, as we look at them, are, the first step is application of intent, and you have to apply for your application of intent, and you go through a process with the DPH. And when you satisfy that process, then they invite you to submit a management operation profile. When you're done your management operation profile, and you satisfy all of those requirements, then they invite you to submit your siting profile. At that siting profile, you have to show compliance with all the municipal requirements during that stage. You cannot get beyond that stage to your registration requirement unless you have fully complied with the municipal requirements. And therefore, we would have to have our special permit in hand before we could get to the registration stage. So we were taking a look at this, and in addition, there was a comment about, well, there are other things that you need to submit. And there were six other things in the warrant that you're required to provide as part of the DPH procedures that are also in your bylaw. Your bylaw says you have to submit, in addition to the registration, your approved security policies, your approved emergency procedures, your approved procedures for home delivery, if applicable, your approved policies and procedures for transfer, sale, or acquisition of marijuana, and a description of any waivers approved. So what I did is I detailed the other six sections in the bylaw, where they specifically make reference to having to submit something that has been approved by the DPH. And what I did for each of those six requirements is underneath the section in your bylaw, which is in bold, I put the section in the DPH regulations that talk about when you submit that at the DPH process. Each one of those submittals is done at the management operations profile, so it's all done at the second phase. So as I was explaining last time, the other requirements, the reason we didn't change or propose to change any of the language of any of the six other DPH-approved items, is those will all be satisfied in the management operation profile, and we don't even get to the siting profile until we pass through the management operation profile. So the first six items that you require, we would have to have satisfied all of them to get to siting, but the seventh item, which is evidence of your registration, you don't get until after siting. So that's why we broke out the registration, and we changed that one. Now, to make it more technically proficient in the bylaw, and the version that we submitted to you this evening, what we did is rather than say, you originally have language in your bylaw that says you have to show your registration. I indicated at the last meeting, as a catch-22, you couldn't, so we submitted language at the last meeting that said, show you a copy of our application of intent. I actually made that language stronger for this evening's hearing. In addition to showing you our application of intent, we could also show you our management operation profile, which would encompass the six items that are on that list, and our invitation to go to siting profile, which means we would have satisfied every approval required from the DPH, which are all conditions precedent to getting to the siting phase of the application. So does that make sense, or do you want me to?
I have a question.
Yep.
And maybe I missed this, but...
So is having it on file saying that each of those steps has been approved, so the first step has been approved? I'm concerned with the language "on file." I mean, you can file anything.
Okay. So if we file an application of intent, okay, we cannot file a management operation profile until we are invited to do so, which means we will have met all of the application of intent elements. You don't get to file until you're invited. They tell you when you've satisfied stage 1, then they tell you to pay your next fee and file phase 2.
Okay. And where can I find, where can we find that that's what it says? Because, I mean, you have arrows, but I don't see where it says you have to be invited.
Let me see if it's in...
I think the simple thing is put "approved" before "application of intent," and "management operations," and then...
So they don't approve them. I mean, what they do is they invite you to file the next document.
Must get some sort of checkmark, hey, you know?
Yeah, your invitation.
Okay.
So I mean, I think you could maybe put that on Town Council to have Town Council confirm that that is, in fact, accurate, and I can look that up for you tomorrow, and I can submit that to Jean and to Town Council. So the way the process would work is we'd have our application of intent. When we're done that, they'd invite us to submit our management operation profile. Each of the things in your list of six things falls under the management operation profile. We have to satisfy those, and then we get invited to siting. So the way I've revised this is, we would have had to have gone through the application of intent, through the management operation profile, and have received an invite to submit our siting profile. So now that we're at the siting profile stage, we would now be on that parallel track that in stage 3 in the siting profile, we would now have to show proof of municipal compliance, which is one we would need to get our special permit. So we would only be coming to you after we're through management operations and invited to siting. So that's a new change for this evening, and that was based on research we did on Friday and over the weekend, to make sure that the language here mirrored the DPH regulations.
So I started researching other bylaws, and I didn't find it inconsistent to have the process at the time of registration. The third bullet down on the screen says municipal permitting may take place at any time throughout the process. Amesbury, we know, has a cultivation up in operational, a cultivation site, and in fronting off of their bylaw, there's materials for review, description of activities, a number of things when they get to the special permit application. Registration materials required for them is copies of registration materials issued by the Mass Department of Health, and any material submitted to the Mass Department of Public Health for the purpose of seeking registration to confirm that all information provided to the planning board is consistent with what's provided to the Mass Department of Public Health shall include but not limited to. The first thing is a copy of its registration as an RMD from the Mass Department of Public Health, a description of the security measures, including security policies approved by DPH and RMD. So it goes on, the seven of them. And looking it over, I guess registration did not differentiate between provisional certificate versus a final certificate, and maybe clarification could be made there, or, this is the first I'm seeing in this proposal, but I didn't, I certainly never found "application of intent" in the bylaw.
My sort of takeaway is that the language, and at least the one you cited, is more robust and complete than the language we have here. Is it?
I didn't draw one for one...
I mean, it's more detailed.
More detailed, but what's admitted here is the rest of our bylaw, which has, I believe Michael counted, six additional DPH requirements that we have today, but they're just not called out in this article. And that's why at the last meeting, I pointed out, it's not only the application of intent would be needed to make it a complete application, because our bylaw today requires proof of DPH approval and security, and proof of whatnot, so...
Which, by the way, we're not changing these sections in your bylaw, which means these six sections are still requirements to apply for the special permit. So when we come and apply for the special permit, we have not in any way changed these sections, so we would be showing you all of these things approved by the DPH, which means we will be through the management and operation profile, because we will have to show you these things approved. We know we will have all of these things approved. We can't come to you for siting profile without these things approved. The only difference is, we know we won't have the registration. You can't get it until they come and inspect your built facility. It's, you know, Amesbury may have the language, but the language is technically wrong. You can't get a registration without a site inspection, and you can't have a site inspection until you've built your facility.
Okay. So at the invitation to submit a siting profile, would the letter of non-opposition for the Board of Selectmen be issued at the time that you receive an invitation?
Would we have sought a letter from the Board of Selectmen of non-opposition? Yes.
Could it not be issued yet at the time of your invitation for the siting proposal?
When we receive our invitation, correct.
Right. So in the siting profile, is the requirement for the letter of non-opposition from the Board of Selectmen? And again, if it's only at their invitation time, we may or may not have that included at the time of applying for a special permit. And one of the requirements for the special permit is to distribute this to town boards for review, and again, that would be sent to town boards for review prior to knowing whether this letter of non-opposition will be issued. Some of those are repetitive from last week.
I have a question regarding this paragraph. It's very specific in thinking about the resiliency of the zoning bylaws over time. What if, for some reason, DPH changes their process, or changes the terminology of their process? How would that affect this specific paragraph?
Well, I think it would impact your entire bylaw, because your bylaw requires six things that have to be approved by DPH before coming here. So if the DPH amended any of these things, your bylaw would have a defect in that you would have to prove something that's been, something has been approved, when in fact, it's no longer part of the DPH process anymore. So it would create an inconsistency, the exact same as the existing bylaw would. So the existing bylaw is premised on the entire mechanism that the DPH is reviewing this on a parallel track with you. And so that's what we did. We took your bylaw, and we searched for DPH, and we took, every single time DPH appeared, we looked at the requirement of what was required by DPH in your bylaw. We then pulled the state DPH regulations, and we took each bylaw requirement, and we lined it up with the DPH regulations. And we found that six of the requirements of the seven that you have, six of them fell in the management operation profile portion of the DPH application, and the registration was the only thing that came after. So we just essentially took the language we were using and made it match the DPH, which everything in your bylaw already did, except for one provision. So we just took that one provision, and we changed it to match the DPH.
How of other towns, they've gotten provisional registrations and then gone for a special permit?
Not that I'm aware of, that they've gone after, sought a special permit after they've gotten their provisional registration.
Yes.
I'm not aware of a town that's done that.
Well, this is all sort of some of the due diligence that I'd like you to write down, because the problem is, given the timing of this process, we don't have sufficient time to vet that, so...
Write in the provisional...
No, I know, it's there. I don't disagree with that, but...
They have to do inspections of the property as part of the process.
That's the problem, is we haven't had enough time to talk to other towns and find out how they're doing.
But I did read a couple in which that they had a provisional registration, and then they were going for their special permit.
Yeah. So let's move on. I think we've made the point about that one. The next change, I think you have two more, right?
So the next change was, I had put in a provision asking that the matter be referred, and we had the discussion about referring and what referral meant, and I asked that it be referred within five days by the planning, the special permit granting authority. And I heard your response loud and clear, and so what I did is I took the five-day requirement out. But what I did is, to make it more reliable for an applicant, I changed it to have the applicant make the referral. It takes the burden off of the planning department, and it places the burden wholly on the applicant. If the applicant wants to make sure that the application has been properly delivered to all the boards, the applicant would have to go ahead and do it to satisfy that requirement.
So Jean, I have a question. Is it typical that applicants forward these copies to the different departments, or is it more typical across the bylaws that that comes from the planning board?
Again, in Amesbury, I believe it says, refer to other boards.
No, I mean here in North Andover.
In North Andover, the planning department sends it under certain bylaw sections.
Okay. Do we, in North Andover, elsewhere, instruct the applicant to be delivering these packages to the different departments?
The only time is during a definitive subdivision review. It's called a Form L, where they need to drop it off at certain departments, receive a signature that it's been dropped off and received, and then turn that Form L into us.
So I mean that...
In special permit applications, we send it to department review, and in certain bylaw sections, I believe the Osgood section 17, the downtown overlay 18, I believe both of those require the planning department to immediately send it to review, and it's due back within a specified amount of time.
But in the subdivision, we require them to do it?
It's a Form L.
Well, that's probably rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations.
I don't think it's the, because that's, it's mostly the honorables and regulations.
Yeah.
So, I mean, again, I think it's a procedural point. I think we have to mark it down, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Thanks.
Okay. The last one?
There was a comment made by Town Council at the last meeting, where we discussed the reference to the new plan in the last section of the bylaw, and Town Council felt that it would be stronger if we actually referenced the plan that was being submitted as an exhibit, called the MMOD plan with the specific draft release date. So we added the language that Town Council thought would make it stronger. So again, we, you know, we listened to everything that was said at the last meeting. We tried to take each point as you made them. We are not, you know, suggesting anything other than we view this as a working session, and we submitted proposed language in each section that we thought might help bring us closer to where you wanted the language to base.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant before we go to Town Council?
Well, I think, I think the one, the one comment on 8.12.4 that Town Council made was that paragraph titled "medical marijuana facility" means a facility used for the operation of an RMD. I think Town Council made a comment that that was, she felt that one was, needed clarification, and, I don't know, maybe Town Council wants to comment on that paragraph again and get your comments back.
Okay. Well, let's bring Town Council up.
And so I can address that, would you like me to address that one issue as to what...
Why don't you do that first, and then we can move on to the...
Yes. So as we discussed at the last meeting, I think it is important for that provision to be clarified in this bylaw, because it, because what it does is it adds uncertainty. We don't really know what that is, if you read that sentence in that paragraph. You really have to parse it down to see all the permutations it could take, so that that type of activity doesn't fall within a medical marijuana facility. So I would just suggest that there's no particular, it doesn't, what I think is important for applicants and for boards is to know exactly what everything is, so what your permitting criteria is, what somebody has to apply for, and because of that ambiguous language, I would suggest that it's better just to include it in a medical marijuana overlay district, anything that is. If it's not, if it doesn't fall within the definition, it doesn't fall within the definition. You don't need to include it in this particular bylaw section.
Okay.
Okay.
So can you, do you have anything else, just in general, that maybe, that from the last time, that related either to the state law or other relevant parts of this that you can convey to us?
Certainly. So one of the things that we discussed last time was that there's two aspects here that have been presented. One is just the extension of the MMOD overlay district to this additional parcel, and that's a determination, so there's two articles. One is to change, to make substantive changes to the MMOD, and that affects how facilities would operate under this zoning bylaw. And then the second article is to extend the overlay district onto another parcel. So you have two questions for you. One is sort of a broader question, which is the second article, which is first on the agenda tonight, to make that determination, and the second one is to go down into, then to go down into the details of your MMOD process and procedure to look at that. So those are your two different issues. And with regard to the state law and the effect, as Jean mentioned, and we mentioned last time, there is the provision in the state law with regard to the recreational piece that states that a municipality can't prohibit a recreational... that states that a municipality can't prohibit a recreational marijuana facility in an area where there is an RMD registered for that particular facility. So what happens is, is if an MMOD is a registered facility under the medical marijuana, once the law goes into effect, then the town is essentially allowing recreational medical marijuana facilities there. So because of that aspect of the law, and I think that's just important to be aware of because what we're doing here is you're looking at a zoning bylaw and you want to make sure that you understand everything, all the impacts of the zoning bylaw and any change to it. So right now you have the MMOD in existence. You know that in 2018, when the cannabis commission starts issuing license, if there is a registered, registered medical marijuana facility there where the existing MMOD is, then they're going to be authorized to have a recreational marijuana use. That's, you know that. And so what you're doing by extending it is that you're also saying that this new parcel is also appropriate for that. So that's...
So by saying that implicitly, the moratorium, that article and language that we proposed and approved as a board is moot. I mean practically speaking, because it's not a moratorium for that recreational use for that facility. So if this were approved, that would be, the moratorium would not apply to it.
Exactly. The moratorium will not apply to that. And I have, and that was a question that we sort of grappled with here internally in town. And so what I did discuss that with the Assistant Attorney General Margaret Hurley, who reviews all town bylaws. And she did confirm that, that that moratorium would not be effective as to any area where there is a RMD registered. So that, there's that point. And then the, so any other, I think that's the critical pieces here and then we can go through the detailed analysis of this. You know, we discussed that before. They have made some changes in response to the concerns. I think the big concern is that definition of putting a definition in and not understanding and not having time to study that. I think that that really needs to be studied because I would be concerned that if the language isn't understood and there's an application that comes in, then how it's considered and treated under the bylaw may be completely different than what the planning board thinks or what the permitting authority thinks and the applicant. So that should probably be discussed in greater detail.
Okay. Any other questions of town council?
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Well, I did have the one question.
Oh, okay.
About, if we're just going to get into that language, about, what do you think about the language about having it on file versus, you know, when they were saying about the application of intent, management operations, profile?
Oh...
I mean, to me, on file doesn't, you could drop it off at some office.
Right. I mean, I think you can change, change that and make it more specific as to what, to whether or not that it's been accepted or issued.
Do you know if that's the process? What they were saying is one step, then you can't go on to the next step without the approval?
Well, I do know that that is the process. Yes, you get an invitation. Right, you get an invitation to apply. And that we do know, we did look at whether or not that the registration, there's a provisional and then there's a certified registration process. And the provisional, if you look at the chart that was up there, it does appear to be, and I'm not, I'm not an expert in that particular area, but it does appear to be that once you get that provisional registration, then the chart talks about construction of your building. Now, obviously, you're not going to construct unless you have the special permit. So I think the provisional registration is probably what we would require.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Now it's really time for the board to talk. And what, if you guys would indulge me for a few seconds, I, I want...
Could we have a moment to just respond or additional information?
Yes, but please be brief.
Certainly. Absolutely. So I do think I want to thank town council. I think the, the point about you have to have that invitation to file your sighting profile. If there's a word, we view this as a working session. So if there's a word better than on file, obviously, we're happy to change it. We literally read the bylaw, I'm sorry, the DPH regs and we based it on, we have an invitation to submit for, for a sighting profile. And so that, it would only be on file if they issued the invitation to us. So we thought that was the appropriate benchmark, but obviously if there's a better word. Right? The second is, the reason we talk about research so much and the reason we have that language in that section is, quite honestly, we have people looking to do research with us and they want to come and they want to start looking at the facility. And one question they all ask is, we've looked at the medical bylaw and the medical bylaw doesn't allow research. How can you do research and development on the site? And we said, well, we're allowed to do research and development under I-2. We're allowed to do research and development under the 4R in the business zone and in the mixed opportunity zone. So we wanted to add clarity because we didn't ever want to be in the situation where somebody came and wants to do research and development, that it's going to involve cannabis and somebody is going to turn around and say, well, it's cannabis, it must be under the medical marijuana bylaw because that's the only bylaw we have in town that deals with cannabis. Because the medical marijuana bylaw really is only adopted under state law to deal with medical marijuana, which is marijuana that's grown and sold to the public for purposes of consumption by the public to treat medical conditions based on prescriptions written by doctors. So we have been working very hard, as I mentioned at the last meeting, on getting partners to come and meet with us. We've traveled, my clients traveled around the world to meet with companies that would like to and would consider doing research and development at this project. And so we felt as though we wanted clarity for them because these, obviously, I don't think I have to explain to anybody who Phillips is, they're the largest lighting manufacturer company in the world. And, you know, our concern is that in order to get somebody like a Phillips...
This is the site, too.
Or a company similar who has an interest in coming here and looking at the site, they need to understand that research and development is allowed. So we put in that language and again, we're not, we're not wed to the language.
It's a form letter.
We're not wed to the language. We would certainly be happy in a working session to try and work through the language and tighten up the language to have town council be satisfied that it doesn't create more confusion. But it was important to us, especially because at the last meeting, it was important to this board that we substantively show that we want to do research and development at this site and that it's an important part of what we're trying to do. So I wanted to submit these letters and these are, you know, people that we've started negotiations with who are all basically showing an extreme interest in the site. We've been to Europe, we've been to Israel, we've been out to Colorado, we're meeting with companies. But they all want to see that we are in fact in the overlay district before they start committing their time, their funds and their resources to coming and developing research facilities at the property. So that was the, the reason we have that language in, in section four. But again, we're happy in any working session to tighten up that language to make it tighter, stronger, better, so that they're, to eliminate any confusion. We're happy to work with town council or this board to do that. But we did want to show you that we have real, serious, significant research and development opportunities and we want to be able to capture those at the location. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. It's really time for us to deliberate on what we want to do next. And my recommendation actually is that we have a thorough discussion and vote on this tonight. If you will sort of indulge me, I'd like to put the things in context and also give you some of my personal views related to where we stand and what I think we should do. I think first of all, I've been on the planning board for a really long time. This is probably the most largest and most significant project that has ever come in front of this board in all the time I've been on the board for, you know, it's been 30 years We have done, for something this large and this significant, very little due diligence related to this. This ties in very closely and very ideally with the planning board, the master plan process that we're about ready to kick off, have a profound impact on anything we do and anything we see. If we vote favorably on this article for this year's town meeting, we lose the time to bring that planning process into play at all, completely. A second thing is that any time in the past when the planning board has taken on a significant issue like this, and I can point to three or four of them in my time on the board, we spent at least a year going over the planning process. And we've formed a group, solicited a lot of views, done a lot of research and due diligence at the state level and the local level. This came at the end of the town meeting process. We, it's shorter than we normally get from those zoning articles and yet it's far and away the most significant one. Think of what we haven't done yet at this point. We haven't gone to other towns in the state to talk about how they've treated this. We haven't gone to people in other states to find out how they've done their zoning and what the impact is this is going to be. We haven't done any economic research at all on this. None of this has been done. This has been a very short, compressed, tight timeframe. And so from both a macro point of view and a micro point of view, we've, you could see it, we've got a bunch of questions and I think if we delved into this, we would have a lot more in terms of this. And this is profoundly going to impact the quality of life in this town for a long period of time. And I, I feel that we've, we've just barely begun to scratch the surface of this. The other point that I would make in that regard is that the state rules are constantly in-changing and constantly in flux. We don't know what's going to happen going forward at the state level. What we could end up with is, could be something dramatically different than what we end up with now. So my point is, there's an awful lot of uncertainty, a lot of potential impact that will have on the quality of life in the town. And we've not really done any planning, any due diligence, any research to make sure. And I could go on and give you 30 or 40 examples of things that we could do and perhaps we should do, but we have not had a chance to do that. So, and I haven't even started to talk about the substance of it and some of the, you know, the potential reasons why you might vote against this. So I mean, I am inclined to say, this is not right, it's not ready, we should vote against it. That's just sort of my personal opinion. So I'll, I'll let anybody else start.
Well, I think I've been straightforward with the applicant from the beginning that I thought this would be better handled at a special town meeting and given us more time to vet it. My concern is recreational. We don't have the rules yet. What rules are recreational are we going to be forced into as a town? I'm not necessarily opposed to the medical marijuana. I'm not necessarily opposed to anything with the, you know, research and development and stuff like that. There, I think there are uses for it, you know, medically. I don't think we've touched the surface on it. There's a lot of other countries doing it. But our FDA still doesn't allow research on medical marijuana on a subject. So there's unknown risks, too. So as much as recreational, everybody says no harm, there's no proven FDA studies in the United States on that because they, they don't allow testing on humans currently. So, you know, I'm torn because we don't have recreational rules and we don't know when we're actually going to have them. The state has guidelines for issuing those. So I don't know how we can make a decision on one when we know the other one is going to happen to us without knowing what they are, the impact of those. So I don't know when we're going to have final recreational, but it may be a better time to get the recreational in place. And, you know, I'm sure if there is a potential money involved for the town, that if the money, if the funds make sense, is, I'm sure the town wouldn't mind paying for a special meeting if it makes sense at that point, you know, financially.
I agree with both of you. And I also, I mean, I have real concerns about the fact that it's an unlimited amount of space. I mean, we're going from something that we pictured as very small and manageable, while we learned about it, to something that we have no control over. And that in itself, I'm like...
So we went from 20,000 to unlimited.
To unlimited. I mean, and, you know, without any studies going on.
It's interesting. There was an article in Business Week this week that talked about a couple of facilities in Canada that were smaller than a million square feet. And they said, one of them was the biggest one in the world. So we would have and we would approve the largest facility in the world. It's just yet another thing about...
Exactly.
What do other towns in the common, is, is there any town in the Commonwealth that's proved this, that has basically eliminated any caps in size? I don't know. It doesn't seem to me to be a good idea. It's an open-ended thing.
There's a 1.13 million square feet approved in Freetown, Massachusetts.
Outdoor.
Outdoor.
Greenhouse, there it's going to be covered, it can't be opened.
But it's outdoor. It's still, and that's another point, that we don't understand the difference between a greenhouse and an indoor facility and how that affects the quality of air in this town or anything. I mean, I just, I'm against it now.
Pete? I agree. So I'm very concerned of what it would do to the character of the town. The uncertainties and risks associated with recreational marijuana and the impact of the moratorium would be moot. So I feel like we would be, we're being asked to give approval for something we don't understand what the impacts are. I've also just taken a look, which you can just do online with what some of the experiences are in Colorado. And based on what I've read, large-scale marijuana production, even with air control systems, they have not been successful controlling the plume that comes out of the industrial cultivation area. And this plume goes downwind. And the experience there in many cases is that impacts property values. And for a lot of people, buying your house is your biggest investment. And if there's a change to the town of unlimited scale that could impact and in other places has impact property values, to me, that's a tremendous risk and we have not had time to assess that. And it's not just the plume, it's also the stigma. How do you sell your house if part of your pitch is, we live by the largest marijuana production facility in the country or the world? And so I have a real concern with that. The other thing I'm concerned with is, we've heard a lot about very large numbers of jobs. I don't understand the basis for that. And we've been told that they're high-tech, high-paying jobs. And again, looking at the experience in Colorado, what I'm reading is not high-tech. I mean, this is an agricultural effort, so you're growing plants. And there's nothing wrong with that, but it's not what I'm hearing. And so I'm concerned about that. And again, it's, it strikes me as an area of risk that we have not had an opportunity to really assess. We have talked a little bit about the requirements for water and we have been told that the facility would recycle much of the water. North Andover is in many respects a unique community because it has its own surface water supply and it is our sole supply. And so again, an area of right now unlimited risk is a facility of unlimited size with impacts to the water in a town that has a sole source, surface source of supply. Another area is just the scale, the numbers we were given by one of the applicant's associates, my understanding, at the last meeting, converts to 10 tons of marijuana production, finished marijuana production per month. If you... marijuana production per month, if you extrapolate that to a million square feet. That's just the finished product, which is a small proportion of the entire biomass of the plant. We have heard very little about what happens to the rest of the plant through the harvesting on a monthly basis. Where is that taken? How is it transported? What sort of, you know, again, odors that create a plume throughout the town as these trucks are moving through the town with the marijuana biomass debris? Again, we have not had a chance to really hear about that. And then I think the last thing that I've seen, based on the experience in Colorado, is that once commercial-scale production of marijuana is done in a facility, in a building, the experience in Colorado is that the building has never been, is never suited for any other purpose. And what these reports are referring to is that as the plants grow on an industrial scale, they're emanating oils that permeate into the structure of the building. And the buildings cannot be cleaned sufficiently for any other purpose. So this is a commitment going forward to the future, that there's a great risk that even were this not to turn out for some reason, the building would be unusable for other purposes. So those are just, I give as examples of concerns of risk to changing the character of the town, impacting. And we've also heard that this, this literally impacts the rights of adjoining property owners as to how they can use their property. So I see benefit to the applicant here, but I see high risk that has not been assessed for the town.
Okay. Howard, you?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few things. I, I think, I, I agree with all of your points to a certain extent. I, I think a certain kind of point, it, it seems that the, the trepidation is primarily over the size and scale of this specific facility, because we already have a medical marijuana overlay district. So conceivably, anybody could purchase or lease in, within that current district and go through the process and operate. It just wouldn't be at the scale.
Yeah, we've only got 20,000 square feet, right?
Yeah. It, it's the scale of being in the, in the Osgood Landing Building that I think gives all of you trepidation. And, and I think Peter's concerns are valid in terms of water usage and environmental exhaust. We, we don't know that. That's a concern of mine. I don't know how these facilities operate. But I moved to North Andover five years ago because it was a very nice community, very clean, low amount of industry. But I'm accepting of people generally being able to use proper, their property as it, as it's zoned, as appropriate, that it doesn't affect the rights of others. I don't agree with the, that, I think, well, I would, I would go as far as to say, I think the stigma around marijuana is certainly lessening in, in our society, by, just by the fact that now recreational marijuana is starting to be voted across the country in a number of states. I think it's up to six right now. So while, while I, I share your concerns and, you know, given I'm associate, I don't have a, a binding say in this, but I, I, I agree with you. I would like more time to understand the environmental effects. But I'm not, so I'm not necessarily convinced that this would be a stigma for the town. And I think it would be, I, I think it's an inventive, perhaps even ingenious use of a facility that I understand has been vacant for quite, quite a time, since, certainly since I've moved here. It's been, the exception of Laser Crays and a few others, the smaller businesses. It's, it, it's a facility, I think it's almost an eyesore to the town, because it just sits there vacant. So that, that is my two cents on the topic. I, I agree with the rest of you on the unknowns are still out there. But I think the unknowns would be there even if somebody started operating within the, the current allowable district.
Great. Thank you. So given that's the case, would somebody like to make a motion on Article 9? And then we'll make another motion on Article 11.
Would you like to vote? Like, what do we, what's the motion?
Yeah, I mean, basically, the recommendation would be either to recommend favorable and unfavorable action with the article. I think the consensus is that it's unfavorable, but somebody needs to make that as a motion.
Really, you guys can't make a motion?
Go ahead. I'll make a motion on Article 11. I'll make a motion to recommend unfavorable action on Article 11 for the town zoning map.
Second. Okay. Is that the 11, the map?
11, yeah, the town zoning map.
11, the map point first.
Okay. Okay. So motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay. So how about Article 9?
Make a motion to recommend unfavorable action.
On Article 9, to amend zoning bylaw, Section 8, subsection 8.12.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. 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 Jean, do we have anything more?
Those are the only two items I included on this agenda. Everyone else, if they continue to the next regular scheduled meeting.
Okay. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
It's funny how you can always make the motions to adjourn.
I'm proud of you.
That's true. They always make you-
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I appreciate you stepping on this special meeting for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's Tuesday.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. We're good.